Some design for, how did that compare to the event on August 11th? And then we're also going to look at our outlet to the Red Run Rain because clearly that was definitely impacted as we, if anybody saw what happened in Macomb County just downstream of Dequinder, huge, huge flooding that way as well. I don't know if there's a specific questions on the study. There's no draft yet. I guess we're looking at maybe a month from now. I think that's going to, I would hope we're going to get it sooner, but we'd like to have some internal review on it and then we would have a draft that we would obviously share with everyone.
The study area again, that's Dequinder to what?
The Stevenson Campbell area. That's just the model area for the actual pipe system that we're actually running in a model.
Will there be any recommendations that come out of this in terms of, you know, reconfiguring this, this system to accommodate more, more flood control type features?
I think when they, when they run the model, certainly there, it's very unlikely that we're going to, we're going to try to make recommendations to handle a storm event like last August. But certainly if the model indicates that there's some areas where, for example, a relief drain may be constructed that would help relieve certain neighborhoods or certain parts of town from larger storm events, maybe beyond the design event, that we can approach the communities and let them know, hey, this is what our model's showing. Is there some interest in moving forward with things like that? Really, that's going to be running these scenarios through the model and seeing what develops from there. But extremely unlikely we would ever move towards trying to design a system that's going to handle a storm event like we had last August. But bits and pieces, areas where we see an opportunity, certainly we'd look for that as we, as we go through the model scenarios.
You know, I want to remind you, this is, this was statistically about a 320-year storm. That means the chances are less than one-third of one percent of a storm of that magnitude happening in any particular year. So it's a very, very rare storm and there's a-
We just handled it down this lot.
Well, not, not like that.
Whoa, 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 settle down back there. Settle down, please. He's talking.
This was, this was a storm that gave us, and I really encourage you to go to the website and look at the PowerPoint we did. This was a storm that we had in, and we had, oh, I don't have, I don't have the things with me, but it was about three quarters of an inch every 15 minutes. And when you have a storm of that magnitude after it had rained all day, that's what swamped the whole system. What you had was a micro storm. We had a very small storm, it was an extremely small area, but it didn't come to any, any kind of inches like that. I think it was maybe an inch, inch and a half storm in an hour and a half. So in terms of, of the amount of rain that hits the ground, it was a very small compared to that storm. That storm was absolutely massive.
We still ended up with water basements.
Absolutely.
Sue it.
But it should be kind of our-
Sue it.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
Five hundred years sure went by fast.
Let's let him make his discussion, then we'll open up, please.
Okay, so my understanding it was, it was, this was a blockage in the system that caused that backup. I'm not sure. Again, I'm not, this, this was what I was told from my office, so I'm not sure. It did, it, this was very localized. It wasn't, didn't involve our actual system at all, so.
All right. What we're going to do, we're going to finish the discussion with Water Resource Commission. We're going to bring on the city engineer to talk more about our particular system here, and then I'll give an update on where we are with the flooding. After that, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. If you'll address the questions to the mayor, he will direct them to the appropriate person. We don't need people yelling back and forth, you know, to the front of the room and the back of the room, mostly because the, it's not going to be captured on TV. If you had a question that would be of interest to somebody else, we're going to miss this. We're going to, we're going to handle it that way. The secondary question I had is that I have been asked by residents why we, as a community, haven't done anything to make sure that an event like August 11th doesn't happen again. And my explanation's basically been we're part of a multi, you know, city system and wouldn't be prudent to strike out on our own, but if you could elaborate on that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I think the, the key issue, when you reference the August 11th event, that doesn't mean that there won't be other storm events that still exceed the certain design storm that may cause these type of localized basement backups. You've got a 300-year storm, and with reference to how the system was designed, it was designed for a 10-year storm. So there's a huge gap in there that you could see events that are much smaller than we had in August have these type of impacts. But certainly one of the keys is, you know, the condition of the systems. One of the things we've done over the last four years now, knowing that our system's anywhere between 80 and 90 years old, for some of the oldest pipes, we've made a concentrated effort to go through all of our, all of the pipes that are under our jurisdiction down here. And we've actually are in our second phase of initiating repairs of the highest priority areas that, that need work or need debris removed, things like that. So certainly we're encouraging all communities to pursue those type of avenues as well that could only help for these, for these larger storms.
Question. I went to the presentation when, when you went in, a couple of things, the PowerPoint, I think we have it on our website, if residents want it. And the thing that had me concerned was the $3.7 million damage to the Coon Drain System and the repair of that system and, because the whole computer room was actually submerged, correct? So-
Not the computer room.
I'd give you an update on that if you want.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm, what I'm, I guess alluding to is that happened on August 11th and, you know, I guess we were so like affected by that event, how is the process of repair of that sewer and its functioning capacity to endure what type of storm to come up right now? And at the same, at the meeting also, I asked, I thought was one of, a really important question as a homeowner and someone who got 34 feet of water on that, on that August 11th, what can I do to mitigate my, myself is what, what can I do as a homeowner? And you set a, a whole point bulletin that I think that, that would be really good to share and, and it was really, it was, and he really told me there were like four or five avenues that you could go to. I think it was the person in the middle, I think it was Hootum, that said something about, you know, sump pit, sump pump, you know, backflow valves, look at a landscape engineer, come to your place and ensure that you roll off from your foundation. These were all like important things, but the one thing he didn't say was, make sure you clean out, and maybe it did and I forgot it, clean out after the storm. I think, did we, did I miss that piece of it, that we have all this debris probably and maybe clean out was really important after that? And I think that even from the street net, do you think that some of the debris from this large volume of pressure maybe could have caused some issues that maybe, and how do we mitigate that as a community, as a city of Huntington Woods? How can we do that? And if there, are there any resources to help us as a small community? That's, I guess those are my main questions. How can, is there any kind, like you secured a grant to study. Is there any way we could write a grant to study that? Do you guys, and do you have access to that? That's why, I guess those are my, I know those are a lot of questions, but sorry.
Well, I can-
They're on my mind.
I can briefly address the damages to facility and the $3.7 million estimate. Of course, that was back of the envelope estimate just weeks afterwards. Now that we have time to evaluate the system, effectuate some of the repairs, we're probably just over a million dollars in damages and a lot, a lot of the repairs have been ongoing. It did not shut down our system, it just hampered certain aspects of it. So the system's still op, is operating today and operated after the event. Just all the, all the items along the way weren't working properly as far as pumps and so forth. But we actually were denied with our insurance claim on our facility. So we're in the process of pursuing FEMA, filing with FEMA to hope to recover for these damages to the benefit of the district for these repairs. So that's, that's where we're on the insurance issue. As far as individual homeowners, I think there was some conversations or some discussions about what individuals can do about preventing backups into their homes during these very large storm events. And things I have seen, I've seen people have put plugs in their floor drains in their basement. I've seen that. I've seen folks who installed backflow preventers on their line that goes out to, go out to the combined drain. All these type of things that homeowners can do, I certainly would strongly recommend you consult a licensed plumber for these type of things. Each home could be different. There could be multiple lines. It's just best to, to have somebody take a look at your house individually. And also there's the, the chance that you may have two separate lines, like I had mentioned. You could have your floor drain go out to the, floor drain from your basement go out to the pipe. You could have your sanitary sewer lead from your sanitary plumbing go out. There's also footing drains around your home. So you have to be careful where, if your footing drains are flowing out and you block those off, you might have water backup on your foundation. So all these type of things need to be evaluated by a plumber to best figure out what the best precautions to take for your situation. And of course, insurance, I always tell folks to, to get with their insurance carrier to make sure they have the proper protection for, if the event does occur, that you do get a backup, that you're covered for damages.
Was there anything else, or? Did you have, was that all your answers?
Yeah, I was trying to get them all in. I don't know if I got them all.
No, those were all my questions. The other thing was, is there anything that you should do in ordinance wise as opposed to the total, the surface area as far as concrete or impervious, impervious surface areas? Are you recommending anything that any communities do to limit our, our concrete mass so we have more impervious surface? Is there any kind of formula to that or any recommendation?
We may incorporate some of that into this report. Certainly there's, your community's a little different, it's a very residential oriented community, so there's not like, people are building detention facilities to serve the neighborhoods like there in other communities, but certainly other communities do have ordinances where they have required detention, even though the system was designed not to have detention for it. So I know, I know Royal Oak has detention requirements, not practical for what you guys have here. Certainly if there's ways, green infrastructure improvements on a lot-by-lot basis to try to capture runoff from gutters or whatever, and maybe keep it on the site to infiltrate in the ground. Certainly there's best practices that we can share that we're familiar with, we can share with the community and make available to residents to see if it works for them.
We would love that.
And you know, some communities do things like buy rain barrels and sell them to their people. They do things like help people develop store, rain gardens. They, all these things of green infrastructure that limits the, the amount of water that comes off everybody's property. The more we're doing that, the more better off we are. The EPA and the DE, the Department of Environmental Quality at the state are very interested in that. They're, they're really pushing that hard. They've come to the GWK to look for potential demonstration projects and green infrastructure, those kind of things. So communities can do very simple programs that aren't expensive to the community, but they help educate the public about what they can do, rain gardens and, and every, every drop that you can prevent from running off your roof or your driveway or something like that is a drop that's not going to come back on your, in a big rain on, in your basement. So whatever you do at the, at the surface is going to help you below the surface at some point.
I think it's important to point out on these type of measures we're talking, certainly that's on a very small scale. When you look at the event in August, these measures aren't necessarily going to make very much of an impact on an event like we had in August, but certainly when you go above the 10-year storm design, any edge you can take off, you know, starts to add up as the entire district maybe looks to adopt these type of things. And you may be, be able to see some relief above the design for the pipe, but a large storm event like we had, extremely unlikely you're going to see significant relief from what we're talking about right now. But that's still worth doing, in my opinion.
I have a question for you about these backup flow protectors because last August, Jim was here, we had an engineer that talked about those. Is there, I know, you know, people are always looking for a fix. They want to solve the problem. They really don't care how you solve it, they just don't want to have any more water in their basement. And when you, when you, when it's suggested that a device like a backup flow protector or you say putting, you know, closing off the drains, when you have that much pressure and you have water backing up like that, I mean, is there, are there any studies, is there anything that show whether, whether they actually work in the event of a major event, or is it just too much pressure that you can't hold it? And then the second part is if everyone, or it's, if, say you have 10 houses and some have it and some don't, what is the effect of the water, you know, being stopped at one point on the others?
Well, well, I do know for sure, mostly anecdotal information, I'm not a plumber, but I know folks over the years that have came in contact with basement flooding problems. They have used these plugs and screwed them into their floor drain and, and they do work. I haven't been involved directly in anybody who's put in a backflow preventer, but again, that's really a plumber's business. But I would think that the, the design of those, the proper specification of a backflow preventer would be appropriate, and again, a plumber could assist with that. But, but you're right, if it's, you know, nine of the homes out of 10 install these devices and the 10th home doesn't, yes, the problem, the pressure is going to be relieved in that home, in that basement of the home that doesn't have this device. You're, you're correct.
Yeah, you mentioned you're going to be doing metering. The study area that you're doing right now seems to be east of Woodward, and so it seems to be below us in the system. What I'm concerned about is, are we going to get metering in Huntington Woods in a number of sections in Oak Park into some of the areas that flow into us so that we can get some analysis as to where the problems are occurring and what the difference in pressure and flow is?
I haven't seen the specific meter schematics of where they're going, but I do know that the, the design of where the meters are placed have more to do with the pipes and the pipe sizes rather than the community borders. But certainly the intent is to look at the drainage district as a whole. So not, not just community by community, but the district as a whole, our system as a whole.
It would be helpful at least if we could get pressures by communities and where there are multi-drains going through, if we could get foundations or other groups to pick up that additional information so that we could get a coordinated approach. The other thing that I think would be extremely helpful is courses at the end of this whole process and how the individual homeowner mitigates the crisis. I read enough of the reports that at this point in time you expect, I think as of 2006, 2007, when you did the last relief, that six or seven incidents and you'd moved it down from 10, and that means only that we might get hit 2% of the time. I don't think we will ever perfect the physical GWK drain to go to zero. And the people, most of the people that are in this room want to figure out how at least for their individual home do we go to zero. So I think one of the things early on that would be useful is regionally, we teach people, these are the options, these are roughly what the costs are going to be if you want to go this channel. We still can't guarantee going to zero, but we can lower the incidence and even make them smaller. I just think that's critical because I read every single one of your long-term reports and your early studies, and at no point did they say we could ever go to zero flooding. And one of the things the city will explain later on, what our process is to lower that level, but when I drove the night of the flood to get home through Oak Park, a block on Parkwood was completely flooded. You couldn't get near the, Mayor Marion McClellan's home. I backed out after I went a little bit down because I knew I would have had my engine underwater. I went to the next block to go west, which was Ludlow, and the intersection was blocked as well. So the crisis that we felt was not unique to Huntington Woods, it was all over. But if you can get a training program to come up earlier, because we know at this point, we're never going to get to zero. So it would be helpful if people know what the costs are, if this is a little bit better, if the plug, okay, it's going to cost you X dollars, most of the time it will work. It just will lower anxiety. I mean, I was reading about people get nervous now, if there's a rain, am I going to get flooded?
Yeah, yeah. I love those things in my basement, they don't work.
No, that's absolutely right. I've, I've been involved in projects for relief drains and I've dealt with homeowners that when, when they hear thunder, they get nervous, or they're afraid to leave their home and go on vacation during the summer because they're afraid their basement's, basement's going to flood. So I haven't experienced it directly, but I've worked with folks like that and I understand the feelings and it's, it's real fear. Your possessions and your home, it's very worrisome.
Are there any other commissioner questions? All right. We're going to move on next to what happened on April 9th. Does anybody have any questions specific to August 11th that they'd like to, to address? We'll need to come up and-
I don't want us to switch.
No.
Okay.
I was looking in the backyard the night of the flood and what I was seeing is like a small, oh, Jan Dem's, 10804 Lincoln, Huntington Woods. And it was like coming, the water was coming to us and black water, geysers were shooting out. So I'm not sure what that was all about. And also when we get a heavy rain in our backyard, we'll get like a little, like a little pool or a lake kind of thing. And I guess my question is, should we not do anything to those things? Because is that in a way holding water? And, because a lot of people are saying, well, I have all this water and I should like add more dirt and put in more grass, but I think maybe talk about, I think it's called a French drain or something to, that maybe those things can be put in to hold some of the water back.
You said a few minutes ago, you want to try to make the water flow away from the house, which is absolutely true. You want, whatever you can do, do that. As long as it's not bothering anybody, that will infiltrate in the ground. And that's kind of what green infrastructure is all about, is letting things gather in a place so they can go into the ground without flowing off into the storm drain. So that's really the basis of that. And if you can leave that there, that's just water that's not going somewhere else.
Okay. And then what was the black geyser thing that were coming, when the water was coming? It was like, I wouldn't want to use the word tsunami because that's, that's stupid, but it was, but it was a waves of water just like going like this with black stuff.
It just might be the, the pressure in the system from it being overwhelmed, too much water to go in the system, and that might have been a low point where it was relieving itself above ground.
It was like all across the whole backyards and the whole block.
Yeah, that's very common, I think, throughout the area where you had the pressure where the water was coming back up instead of going into the catch base.
And the black was sewage?
Uh, sewage, it could be sediments, dirt, whatever you find in those facilities.
Or a combination there.
Right.
And you did mention earlier that these kind of storms do wash things into a system. There's no way around it, that happens. So that's why you have to go, you, asset management is extremely important, it's making sure that these things stay open, because anytime you have a big storm, that kind of stuff does get in the system. Depends on how bad it can be.
I live at 13144 Winchester. And I don't know a lot about the systems, but I was wondering, where does all of this water actually end up?
Lake St. Clair.
Lake St. Clair. I know that part of the concerns that the beaches there had was the combined sewer overflow and the E. coli, and so as a result, there were restrictors or something, or restrictions put in place so that these big rain events didn't wash sewage into the lake. And I'm just wondering whether, in major storm events like that, whether it makes sense to restrict flow? And if, if, you know, if all of the restrictions had been removed on August the 11th, would we have suffered the same level of damage? And I don't know, I'm just asking that question whether, I, I know some of this stuff is state mandated or EPA mandated, but there has to be a provision for these major events where you just crank it open because it's all going to get there anyway and, and have no backups in the system whatsoever. So I just wonder if you could address that issue.
Sure. We hear that a lot, speaking to a lot of folks in communities, the key thing about the pollution control facility, there's no gates that we open or close. It's a, it's a facility, it fills up. The, the stormwater that fills up this facility is chlorinated, it kills all the bacteria and E. coli because it is combined with sewage. And if it fills up too much, it spills over a wall. So there's nothing that's open, nothing that's closed, nothing that's restricted. The design is all fixed. So if that helps kind of clear up how that operates. And we try to touch on that in that presentation we have on, on the website. I don't know how clear it is, but in essence, there's nothing open, closed, we don't turn any valves, we don't start any pumps. It fills up and spills over when it gets too much and goes down, down, down towards Lake St. Clair.
I was only, I was going to also just note that I was in my basement on August the 11th and it, the water started coming up and then all of a sudden, it was like somebody had closed something somewhere. Because it was shooting up out of the drain with such force that it, I would have thought that a flooding would have just gradually gone up and up and up. But this was an exponentially increasing pressure and flow, so.
Water has a staggering amount of force. Water is heavy. So when water moves at a, at a fast rate, it has a staggering amount of force. These systems were all supercharged. They were, they were full and they were stuff all above them pushing on it to get more in, trying to get in. So whenever that happens, it's going to look for escape somewhere. So that's why you had manholes pop up and stuff flowing out of it, coming out of your, out of your basements. This system is, when there's not a storm, we have a very small amount of sewage that flows through a system. When we have a storm, the first inch or so of rain will bring that up to the top of a weir, which is like a dam along that sewage line. When that su, when it's, has enough in it that it can't hold that into that sewage line anymore, it goes over that first weir into the GWK. It fills up that first section and there's another weir it goes over. During that time, it's treated with hypochlorite, sodium hypochlorite, which is like chlorine, so to kill all those bugs. That's why that system is there, like you said, to protect the beaches, to protect the Clinton River, the Lake St. Clair. So when it goes over that second weir, it's treated. Then there's a weir weight right at the end of the system, right at Dequinder. That last weir is what it goes over and then it goes into the Red Run River, which goes to Clinton, which goes to St. Clair. At that point, we had so much rain that where it comes out at Dequinder, underneath that bridge on Dequinder, have you ever seen that bridge? There's a bridge, you don't really notice it unless there's a storm where the water comes out there with massive force. So that system was coming out, was coming out through the GWK, but the water in the Red Run was already above that weir in the GWK. As a matter of fact, it was above the road in Dequinder. It was flooding Dequinder from that road. So the water that was coming through the GWK had nowhere to go. It was pretty much stopped, but some of it was getting through. Actually, that held that water as long enough so the chlorine we put in there worked and what, what came out of the GWK in that storm was clean to the permit level that the EQ gives us. So that water was actually where it should have been in terms of cleanliness when it came out of there. But it was held up by that backup from the, from the Red Run River. When that Red Run River came to the point where it went below where the, the last weir in the GWK is, suddenly all that GWK water went through again. And that's why everybody, I've heard a lot of comments about people at 10, 10 o'clock at night, suddenly the water dropped down again. People thought, well, somebody must have opened up a gate. Well, no, it was the natural gate of water pushing back on the GWK that stopped the flow. Once that water cleared and it could flow into it again, then that cleared all out and everything cleared out. And that's when we found all the damage in GWK. And then that's when you saw your drains drop back down through the floor again. So that's how all that happened. It, it sounds and it's easy to think that there was some kind of gate that people were closing that was shutting this off, but that's not how the system works at all. So unfortunately, we had just such a supercharged system for that, for that storm that everybody was affected, that was below a certain- That was below a certain level of elevation and route. There you go.
There's one more back here.
Name and address, right? Okay, Karen Nanos, two five eight one two Salem. I wanted to follow up on something Mary said, just to get clarification, I think. And I've heard it mentioned a couple times, about how things flood into the system. And then you asked if there was something that needed to be done after an event that could clear it out. I wanted clarification on what you meant by that. Like, are you saying that after a big storm, should the city be doing something locally to clean something out? Should I be doing something at my home to clean something out? Should you be doing something in whatever basin you're talking about over there to clean something out? Is that what you meant? And are we doing anything about it?
I, I think that's what you meant, where we talked about all this debris washing into the system. So it washes in the local system, it makes its way into the, our system, the larger system. And as a matter of fact, after every huge rain event where our basin is in use, we spend days scooping out all the sediment and debris that's accumulated and settled out. So it's possible that debris is washed in and may accumulate. Typically, the way it accumulates is kind of evenly throughout the system. But, but it is things you might wanna look for. It's just hard to say, go through your system after every big rain. I don't know if that's necessarily the case. We've been through all of our system. We haven't seen any major blockages, but there could be accumulations of sediment. Typically, it doesn't accumulate where it's blocking something unless something has failed inside the pipes. And again, that's just all part of a routine maintenance program that you just have to, you have to keep up with.
So the answer to that question, I think Karen, what you're looking for, is yes. After an event like that, things do get into a drain. And just like they had to go clean out all their stuff, I think, you know, I, that's what I did to my thing. I went and cleaned it. I would have known to do that, only that when I had my work done, the plumber recommended that I do that. And I went to this talk and they followed, sort of followed suit to that. Because debris gets, it's with such a force, you know? It was shooting out of the toilet, it was like a poltergeist, you know? With that kind of force, you're gonna get more debris in there. The thing that I was, is those weers, the screens that you were talking about?
The, the screens are on the upstream end to screen out all the sticks and twigs and leaves and debris.
Uh huh.
Those are fixed, but those have holes in them obviously because it's screens. The, the area where it overflows is at the end, it's just a wall. And once it gets above the, the top of the wall, it's gonna spill out into the Red Run drain eventually to the Clinton River and now it looks like.
But one, someone asked me a question, do the screens hold water in? Do the screens, because, you know, could they go up and down? So people were, I think that's where people were getting the valve kind of thing. I, do you, did you hear a lot of those questions about the screens?
Not specifically on the screen, but certainly, you know, the, the screens, I think the diameters are a quarter inch or half an inch. So the water's not gonna flow as fast through them, especially when they're collecting debris. But I think there's sixteen or eighteen screens. It's a huge screening room that's hundreds of feet long that the design of the facility incorporates the flow through the screens to keep the system operating per design.
So just alluding to what Mr. Hazen said, if in one of those major events, and you have these pressure meters, and you know we're getting one of these huge, like one hundred year storms, like in the next ten years or whatever it is, could the screens automatically go up and let those, let water flow down or no?
The, the screens don't automatically go up. What we do have in these, there's another set of screens. I think there's four additional screens, which larger openings, that we will in large events divert flow to go through the larger screens to help pass more water. So in a way, we're doing what you're saying, we're passing more flow through larger screens. But the typical operation, during your typical rain events, we go through the finer screens to get that water quality feature. But there are, we call them relief screens for large events, so they do.
Who operates, the operate, do the screens operate by pressure or by people?
There's people in that facility, who manage that facility, who make those decisions based on sensors that they get on their computer screens.
Okay.
And the screens are self-cleaning, so as debris gets caught up on the screens, it's, it's cleaned off.
Two of them.
And it's carted away.
Right, right, because what you showed were those. So when I thought at that point that maybe in the future, if we were to have an event like this, like the screens from the pressure meters, you bring all that up and what Mr. Hazen was saying, at this point, we might get some, we won't get debris, you still have your weers, but you would have, all the screens would be up and you want this flow go through. And maybe that, and I'm, I was just thinking that would maybe lessen our, but maybe not.
Yeah, I think what you're gonna find when this study comes out is that the controlling factor wasn't the screens. It was, it was the, the wall I was referring to, the downstream end. And then the depth of water into the open channel downstream from the facility. That combination and the depth of water there, and the model's gonna help us understand that.
Okay.
That restrict, help restrict.
So can I summarize the answer to my question? Because we went a little bit like farther than I could follow. But the answer, I think, is yes.
Yes.
Debris goes into the system after a storm. Can we do anything about it at the big part? No, was that it?
No.
No?
Well, we, we, we look at the facility and remove debris that accumulate in the facility on a regular basis.
Okay, then, on a city level, can we do anything about it?
You'll hear about that.
I think you will be.
Okay, and then as a resident, I should be calling a plumber after a, a big storm if I'm worried and have them clean out my drain to the sewer that goes to the street and my storm drain?
I can just give a suggestion, I'm not a plumber, but certainly, you, you should keep your...
I mean, talking debris that's building up.
You should keep your pipes clean. It doesn't necessarily mean after every rain event.
No, no, just one that really washes debris into it.
Right, and it may be improved.
I just wanted to clarify that that's something I can do and.
But certainly, I'd refer you to a plumber for his expert opinion, but certainly you wanna keep your pipes clean if a plumber's.
Well, like, you gotta also consider that our pipes tend to be much larger. So we have ten, twelve foot pipes, and it's really hard to clog a ten or twelve foot pipe. But it's fairly easy to, to clog a pipe that's coming out of a home or just, you know, your, your laterals, because they're much smaller.
What do you mean by laterals? What do you mean?
Laterals are the ones that take it, when, when you take it to the street, you're, you're, you're responsible to the street. The street is a lateral to ours.
Okay, what if mine goes to backyard section between two people's backyards?
Right. So no lateral.
Our's goes to the backyard.
So that, that's, I'm just wanting verification of what that word meant. I'm sorry for speaking.
No, I appreciate that, no, it's good. So I mean, really, roots are one of, are a bigger problem, actually, generally. Because roots are developed, you don't even know they're there until something's locked up, locked up, so.
Okay, any other questions about the general problem? The August eleventh problem, August eleventh, yes.
Chris Anderson, one zero one two four Lincoln. Something, just to follow up on what Jules had asked earlier. After the flood, a lot of people were frantically installing back, backflow preventers, not everybody. Because again, the cost looked like it was, you know, dependent on whether you should or you shouldn't or could afford it. But the question comes up is that if nine out of ten people did get it, you know, what happens to that one? Well, you know, in a neighborhood, what, what starts to happen? Is there any studies or anything that says that we should look at that as maybe a requirement because of this type, type of a, you know, system we have? The dual system? Should we be looking at that as like the, the one last best thing we can do to our, our homes to help prevent something from happening? Is there, I'm not sure if there's, you know, if that's a, if I phrased the question right, but I don't know whether there's been any study to tell us that, well, these things going in, are they gonna cause me more problems if I don't put one in? Because all my neighbors did.
Right.
And I don't know whether that's a, you know, a good solution. But if it is, then maybe the city needs to take a, you know, a stand and say, you know, everybody, you have to have them. And we'll have to change something and, and make it happen.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that you have to have them is the answer. But one of the things those studies show us as we develop these models, is there's certainly neighborhoods that sit lower in elevation. Basements are just lower than other neighborhoods who sit higher, even if it's just a couple feet. And maybe we can look at these areas that sit low. And perhaps those may be a better candidate for the precautions that you're suggesting. Where then you start to go upstream a little bit. While you, you have a couple, three feet, you get to the higher, higher, higher ground, so to speak, or basements that are higher. And that'll provide some protection. So the lower, the homes that are lower that have these plugs in them, the plugs will be preventing them. The homes that sit higher will be safe just because they sit higher. Maybe that's something we can look at as we develop our models and identify certain areas that might benefit more than others.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
Gail Linden, two five eight four oh zero, two five eight four zero Concord. Commissioner White's asked a question about your grant and your study. And if there was something that you could either advise us to do as a community and help us with grant writers, or tell us a direction to go so that we can look at the problems we're having in our own community, not just what's going on there.
Yeah, we, we made application for a state grant. And I think all communities had, had the opportunity to do that. But it was, the selection process was random and certain folks did get, there's only so much funding. I'm not quite sure where Huntington Woods ended up or what their application process was. But that was available to all the communities initially.
I think I saw that you are on the list. Somebody, but you're not on the list at all, or I thought you might in the future years.
There's four or five years out, I'm not quite sure what the results.
There's worries about funding of it after the first few years, but.
Okay, one more and then I think we'll...
Tom Franco, two six three seven oh Humber. I, I might be, if I might be afforded the possibility of what might be a staggeringly stupid question. You indicated that retention ponds were not viable for Huntington Woods. And obviously, that's correct. What about the idea of keeping the stormwater separated from the real deal sewer, okay? Is it feasible technically? I'm not talking cost, because when I start thinking of costs, it's, makes me woozy, okay? Would it be technically feasible to build retention tanks underneath the streets where the storm sewer would be kept separate until it could be pumped out, okay, into the system when the system was ready to handle it? Is that something that is technically feasible?
It's certainly technically feasible, but if you don't wanna talk costs, I won't talk costs.
Yeah, I don't wanna talk about them either.
That's really how the George W. Coon works too. That's how the Coon works too. If, if the storm doesn't produce enough to get up that second weir and go to the Red, Red Run, it sits there until the storm's over and then we drain it down to the treatment plant. So it, it does, it's the same, that's how they work. So it, it could be done, absolutely.
But from a, from a scale of the George Coon facility, the George Coon facility is like a four lane underground highway, two miles long. It's an enclosed, twenty foot high, thirty foot wide. And that facility is only gonna capture a three quarter inch rainfall from this area. So you can imagine, and that's two miles long of a concrete tunnel, roadway underground. So you can imagine the scale we'd be talking about to kind of make a difference on it. But just to illustrate the facility that we have versus the amount of rain that it takes to fill it.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at just, you know, I didn't do any, a lot of research on this. But we live on Humber, okay? And the water went from our front step across the street, but it didn't go the whole block. You know, I, I think that it's technically feasible to build a large enough tank to hold that. And that would have been a lot of relief to the system. But again, the cost is, is another issue, okay? So, thank you.
I need just one more question, because it was, it leads up to those plugs. And it was my last, because I wanted, when I did my research, it's the last question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
With those plugs, this is the one thing that I found out in, in researching this, is that if you do backflow valves and plugs, you run the risk of some foundation issues. Because when you, that stuff shoots out your toilet and that pressure comes down. And this is what, that you have to make, you make decisions on what you want. And if that pressure is, is actually escaping, and if you do plug it up, that there is this pressure surrounding the house and now you have it at... This is what someone was, you know, I read some articles on that. Is that, is that, did you hear anything like that? Like, if you plug everything up, you could put your foundation at risk if you are in one of those low lying arrows, areas on a, on one of these kind of rains. Is that?
I, I think that that's possible depending on your situation. And I know Jim has two licensed plumbers on his staff, I probably should have brought one along.
Yeah.
Certainly, you know, certain cases may, may fit this situation.
Because people are talking about foundation issues now. I'm just wondering if, if a flood like this would cause problems like that.
It's definitely possible, certainly on the scale of flooding that we saw in August. That's so unique that very strange things could happen, this thing back up into your foundation drain system, sure.
Thanks, that was my last question.
Okay. Is this about August eleventh?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you, you will, you will have the honor of being the last person to speak on that question.
Okay. My name is Art Mondra La, two six nine one two York Road. And based on the experience in my house, my house was flooded on August second. And between August second and August eleventh, I learned a lot about sump pits and backwater valves and all that stuff that I didn't know before, because I'm from California, it's pretty dry there. But I can tell you, the experience in my house, and I think other people too, is not just a sewage system backup issue. It was a water table issue. And we had a significant storm on August second, we had a lot of rain leading up to that. And in, in my house, I have two sump pits, one of them did not have a sump pump. And I never really thought about it, I just thought, oh, got a hole in the ground. And on the August second flood, I had remediation come in there, you know, they cleaned the whole basement out of two inches of water. And I was looking at that, that pit that did not have any pump in it, and the water was a foot from the top. And so the guys, when they're all done cleaning up, I said, you know, why don't you suck that water out of there? You know, see what's at the bottom of it. So they tried sucking it out, and it just would rise back up. Suck it out, rise back up. And then on the August eleventh event, I still had only one sump pump operating. And, you know, I put up the good fight for a couple hours. And at a certain point, the water just came up through the sumps from the bottom. And I have also a, what used to be a maid's room down there. It's now a guest room, because we can't afford a maid. And, and there's a, there's a full bath down there. And on the, on the bedroom side of that bath, there is just a wooden kind of access panel so you can get to the pipes. You take off that access panel, there is exposed dirt underneath the, the foundation. So there's like a, I don't know, two foot square or one foot square of exposed area. After August eleventh, that, the sand, the silty sand from that area had just burst up through and infiltrated all through the bedroom. So I know in, in my, in my situation, everybody's hung up on this sewage thing, which is a big issue, I'll, I'll grant you that. Now, I had old backwater valves, and now I've got a new backwater valve. But the other issue that nobody seems to be discussing is the water table issue. And I think part of the reason that I got flooded on August eleventh, part of it, is because of the system that the city has, where they have these drains on the, on the, on the, on the, the streets that, that allow only a certain volume of water to get into that sewage system. If it's, if it's overcome, if there's too much water, that water just becomes a lake. The lake goes over the curb, it saturates in the parkway, and in my case, in my neighbor's case, into the lawns. Goes down into our lawns and, you know, so basically, in low lying areas, the people in low lying areas are trying to pump up, pump the water out of their ground for the whole neighborhood. And that seems to me that somehow, that issue needs to be addressed because that was a major component, in my opinion, of this, this August eleventh event. And nobody's talking about that. That's all I have to say.
The ground for August was saturated that year, and, last year. And when was the last time there was saturated ground in August? I mean, this was the wettest year, I think, one of the wettest years on record here in the state region. So again, we're, we're hitting, we might get that again this year. The way the jet stream is nowadays, we're gonna get hit again, I think, so. I mean, saturated ground is something that generally is a springtime issue. And when you had that much rain on top of saturated ground, I can see that could be absolutely part of it.
Right.
All right, thank you. If you could stay there in case there's any, any other questions. Tim Germain, do you wanna pull up a chair and join the table, then you can share the microphone? Tim is with Noah Kipfrost, he's our city engineer. He's gonna talk more specifics about what he... Tim is with Noah and Chris, he's our city engineer, he's gonna talk more specifics about what happened on April the ninth. He's also gonna get into the restrictors, the pros and cons of the restrictors, I'll talk a little bit about that.
Can I stand here?
Sure.
Good evening, I didn't expect to see all you so soon, I was here in the last flood, and I'd hoped that that had been the last flood, but just gonna stay there. Can everyone hear me? On April ninth, we had a rainstorm here locally that caused some flooding. This, as the commissioner stated, was kind of a microstorm, it didn't just hit here in Huntington Woods. I live in Farmington Hills, I've lived in my home for fifteen years, I've only had water in my backyard three times, and that Thursday was one of those times. So I know that we got a large amount of water in a short period of time. And in this instance, it affected the Winchester, Victoria Avenue areas, the Berkeley, Alor areas, the Elgin area between Scotia and Newport. And preliminary estimates were some thirty-two homes had some water in their basements, or at least reported water in their basements. This is kind of expected in the springtime, this is when we get all of our rain, this is when, you know, the snowpack has melted. In our case, we had a snowpack that stayed on the ground for a, all winter. It was so cold, it didn't melt, but it melted very rapidly. And now we're gonna see the rains that are coming through in the springtime that you annually and usually see. In the instances of this flooding, the DPS and the city had sent out their crews to look at what was the main cause. Winchester and Victoria, they're still investigating, but the crews went out there, all they could find was some sludge and some miscellaneous debris. So either that material broke free and went further downstream after it did its damage, but there's no real cause. On the Berkeley and Alor areas, there's two storm sewers at service that line, and both of them had tree root intrusion into those lines. They created a mass, Amy showed me on her phone, this mass is just a fibrous bio thing that they pulled out of a twenty-four-inch line. It's almost completely clogged with roots. And that's a very common thing in an older community such as Huntington Woods, you've got very mature trees, that's why everyone wants to live here. Very long-term homes that have had natural landscape and stuff added, and those trees kind of seep the nutrients that are in those pipes, and they grow towards the sewers. And if there's any break, or in our case, these sewers are dated from the nineteen twenties and thirties, they're very old systems, very old lines, some clay, a lot of concrete, they break up in time, and they provide little openings that the roots get their little fingers in, and they come in there and they start growing in the lines. Elgin had the same thing, there were tree roots that were found in the mainline sewer. So in the instance of this flood, we did get a lot of water very rapidly, and I believe that from the investigation that we found, the majority of that backup was caused by tree roots which are growing in the lines. And I've heard a lot of conversations today about, you know, what happened with the GWK, we appreciate that, we didn't know what had happened back in that timeframe, but we knew that there was a monster storm. We guessed over two hundred years that day with the data, and it's pegged at three hundred and twenty, that's a monumental thing. But that's miles away from Huntington Woods, so you're all concerned about what you can do here in our own community, and what we can do to prevent problems. When I spoke to you last, I gave you a bunch, maybe not all you were here, how many were here at that last meeting? Okay. During that time, I gave everyone some common sense things that we knew we could do and to try to prevent this kind of stuff. Water gets into your basement in several different ways. If you have a combined sewer system like we have, it can back up through your sanitary. If you've got an older foundation, it can come into the cracks. If you've got a failed foundation drain, it can back up and leach into your basement. All of those things are probably happening because the homes in Huntington Woods vary from a few months old to, you know, sixty, seventy years old. And that's the character of the homes, they're beautiful, they look great, that's the era. But if no maintenance had been done over the last fifty, sixty years, you could have cracks in your foundations, you could have damaged or failed weeping tile. You could just have valves that maybe had been in place but don't work anymore, because they were frozen, or just time, you know, stops that stuff. So we talked about what you can do to keep water out of your basement. First things, clean your gutters. If you have trees growing out of them, like in some communities, the little seedlings get in there, and you've got your gutters clogged and they're half-full of debris, that prevents the water from going into the gutter. If it goes, and during the spring storm that we had here, I watched in my roof, the water cascading in a waterfall, because the gutters were already full of water, and they're just spilling right down, going right down the side of the building. So there's a gap on your foundation, we had a saturated ground, that water had already found its way in there. We have clay materials, we have sand materials in Huntington Woods, but water, if it can't get in your gutter, it's gonna go right down your basement wall, it's gonna seep in through a crack, it's gonna migrate under the floor. So we talked about putting on gutter extensions, how many people went out and booked to Home Depot and bought a six-foot gutter extension and put it on their downspout? If you didn't, okay, one, if you didn't, I suggest you do that. Because those, those will help keep the water away from your home. Now, in the event that we had here with the three-hundred-year storm, there was nothing that was gonna stop the backups where they did. Unfortunately, if you have a low-lying residence, because the world's not flat, a lot of architects think it is, but engineers know it's not, the lower places are gonna fill up first, and then if you're on higher ground, you're gonna be saved by whatever your lateral, your lead is. If you've got a couple extra feet, that might have been the difference between you getting two feet of water in your basement and not seeing it go above your footing drain. So where you live is important, and there is some things that you can do. We talked about the concept of preventative maintenance, getting a backflow preventer, to discuss that with your plumber. If you are gonna put them in and if you have a three-hundred-year rainstorm, you better wedge a two-by-four on top of that to your joist, because that's the only way it's gonna stay in the ground. I mean, when you blow manholes off thirty feet in the air, the force and that pressure of water backing up, it's like water hammer when you turn your faucet off. If you don't have those little things in there, you hear this clunkiness banging, well, that's basically what it is over a twenty-mile square area. So you can look at backflow preventers. It is a mechanical device, it's subject to failure, it may not be for everybody. We wouldn't want to say that the entire city would have to do that, because in some instances, that may cause you grief and aggravation five years from now. You put it in now, we don't have a rainstorm, five years from now, we have a bad storm, and all of a sudden, that thing fails, because it's got stuff clogged on it, or goo, or whatever, and water gets in there anyway. So you can talk about those things, sump pump disconnects, footing drains, they're all possible alternatives. Same thing with rain gardens or bio swales, I mean, I know that there's a cost to all these. None of these ideas are gonna be free, okay, nothing will be free, so there's a cost to it. As we rebuild your roads, we continue to put restricted covers on them. I know there was a conversation about storing the water in the street, but honestly, that is the best place to store it when you have a combined system, because that way it's not getting into the pipes and backing up into basements and backing up into your sewer. So we intentionally put restricted covers on every brand-new road that we build, and every community that we have combined sewer situations, and they have helped. If you just do the math, the regular thirty-slot catch basin that you may have on your street, it's got thirty holes in it, it's got a hundred and sixty square inches of opening on it. The newer ones, the little six-slot ones, six rectangles, have only sixty-five square inches of opening. So we've reduced that by almost sixty percent. So we are making the water stay, when it rains heavily, in the street. So if you take care of it at your house, get it away from your house, get it to a low point, if you may, even if it's temporary, we'll do our best to keep the water into the street before it backs back up into your sewer. What can we say, I think what the city is gonna have to go for, need to do, and we attempted to get some funding for this through the SAW grant process, which is probably the vehicle you were talking about. We didn't go in in the first round, we went in in the second round, and our application was denied, because the DEQ was overwhelmed with applications. So we didn't get a chance to submit, I had it all prepared, it's in my binder, and we had taken it there to Lansing, they wouldn't take it, they had too many. And as the commissioner in Oak County stated, they are working through as a lottery system. I don't remember, it was first come, first served, and then they scrambled them up, and then they picked them from a hat. So those that were lucky enough to get funding are working through those programs right now. And what they're doing with that money, ninety-nine percent of them, are cleaning and televising the sewers in their communities. And that's what we are going to recommend. When we did that application, I'm gonna shock you here, the cost to clean your entire city was seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That was in two thousand and four monies, now I'm told that it's closer to nine hundred thousand dollars. And that's just gonna clean and televise all of our leads that are in our backyards through our seventy-two-inch pipe that heads out of Huntington Woods. I think it's seventy-two, right, Jay? That's not gonna fix anything we find, and we may find something after fifty, sixty, seventy years. So in addition to that nine hundred thousand, let's call it an even million dollars, if we find mistake, or I mean, damaged areas that require catch basins, structures to be rebuilt, lines have collapsed, they might have a belly in them, they might have separations from their sewer leads, we'll have to repair those, and that'll be more money. So I think what we are gonna discuss in the city, we've had conversations about it before, is to come up with some kind of preventive maintenance program and try to accomplish this in either a three-year period if they can, or do it all at once, which will be through either a millage, or a bond, or a tax increase. But those of you that have suffered through this pain and heartache, I feel for you, I really do, I would rather pay five thousand dollars of my tax money towards that than to pay it for cleanup, and, you know, get ten percent of my stuff replaced. So that is it in a nutshell, we believe that these backups were caused primarily from root intrusion in these particular areas. It could have been stuff that got washed in the sewers, remember, I went out today to look at some of these catch basins, those six-hole slots get debris on them, there was pine needles, there's grass clipping, someone mowed the grass already, you know, I wasn't the first one, but someone did. Clean those off, and don't shove them into the ground, because that's the same material that's gonna find its way back into the main sewer, that's gonna get treated and caught, you know, five miles away at the county facility, but it may plug up you on the corner or somewhere else. Pine cones get in there, believe me, kids pop those things up and throw stuff in there, pot bottles get washed in. I mean, we've got a pretty good situation, because we don't have what's called a mailbox structure, which has a open grate in it, so large plastics and debris and paper and candy bar wrappers don't get in there as much as the other thing. You're talking about sand and debris and coal patch, just common maintenance road stuff makes its way into those drains which get washed downstream. And everybody is downstream from somebody, so it may not be your problem today, it could be your problem tomorrow. That's kind of the gist of it.
Are there specific questions that Mr. Jermaine can address?
Yes.
I gotta go up there. We'll be able to hear you here, but people at home couldn't.
I know. Cassandra Durant, two six zero two zero Alor Avenue. My question is, us as residents, we're required to check all of our lines that lead to your lines for years, right? After every big storm, that's what you're suggesting. But now you're telling us that the city of Huntington Woods has never had a thing in place to check your system.
No, that's-
No, that's, but you said that it's gonna cost us seven hundred and some thousand dollars for all of the pipes in Huntington Woods to be checked.
If we start today, or tomorrow, or next week, to find all these hidden landmines, which are the tree roots that are growing through all your- They've done work in maintenance over the years, they foam-